Good evening to everyone for the July 16th. Mount Vernon Council Meeting to Order. The only change on work to the agenda, Chris did hand out a revised one that included the G2 under public hearing, but we'll move item number two under consent agenda, exception letter of resignation from Marty Christensen to the motions for approval, so under J. Other than that, it should be as presented.
I can also approve the amended version of the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is communications. Does anybody that would like to address the council? If so, please come forward. Seeing no one, we will move on to consent agenda, approval of council minutes, July 2, 2018, approval of liquor license for sing-along bar and grill.
I do have a note on the minutes from the prior meeting. When we were discussing the bills, the city bills, and the payment arrangement structure, there's a comment in there, there's a sentence that says, that Wes commented that they should be current, and it would be, we need to add, my comment was that they should be given a payment arrangement in order to keep current if necessary.
Last sentence under discussion.
Yeah, the last sentence under that.
Do you have anything you need to?
I didn't think.
Is that good?
Yeah.
In that case, I move approval of the consent agenda with the previous edit.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item, public hearing, public hearing for the consideration of bids for the First Street West Culvert Replacement Project. Now open the public hearing. Anybody that would like to comment? If so, please.
Dave Sheikins here with Meadstrom Kim. This project is to replace the box culvert on West First Street. It's about a three by three box. It is, as you recalled out, right on the city limits, and there's a produce farm that's out there, they've got a sign right about that general location for point of reference. The culvert is just beyond the edge of the street, and it was starting to collapse, there was a sinkhole with this farm, and we had talked about it a while back, and put it on the CIP program. In talking with the county, we were working with them on the traffic control, they indicated they have a project coming up here in the next year or so, and that project is to do some resurfacing and possibly some widening, so we did modify our project slightly to accommodate that section in future, we decided to do a joint project with them. This project, we bid out, and I'll report on the bids here as we get to item 2D, G2 rather, but the project would be constructed this fall, this summer and fall, trying to get done in the period after they get done with the sweet corn sales, the gentleman lives out there, has some concerns about that, so we worked pretty closely with him not interfering with his business, and try not to interfere with the school routes too much, but we have coordinated with the school as well, and they're aware of the project and can accommodate a short road closure, so. That's the general view of the project. I'll report on the bids as we get out. Any questions?
Is there anybody else that would like to comment during the opening forum? No, see no one else, close the public hearing, and proceed to G2, Resolution 716-2018B, making award of construction bid for improvements known as the First Street West Culvert Replacement Project. Guys, I could have handed you stay right there.
I need you to go grab my sheets and fill in the form. We bid this on the 10th, and we received three bids. Low bid was favorite reconstruction, forty-one thousand eight hundred eighty dollars, sixty-eight cents. Second low was from Pierce Tobin Construction, and they were at forty-three thousand five hundred sixty-six dollars fifteen cents. And the third bid was Boomerang Corporation, they were previously on the reckless excavating, they'd done work here in town, they were at sixty-six thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars. So, favorite reconstruction, we did ask them for some references, they're a smaller contractor, branching out. The gentleman that is in charge of the subcontractor, or I guess subsidiary, rather, that's doing the work, is a contractor that's done a fair amount for Casey's Stores, Casey's General Stores, does a lot of site improvements, storming sewer paving and that sort of thing, has also worked with Septicon Construction on a number of projects, came highly recommended by both entities when I contacted them for references, so this being a relatively small project, and the same nature of work that he's accustomed to, we felt that he would be recommended at a low bid of forty-one thousand eight hundred eighty dollars and sixty-eight cents to award contract.
I assume this bid covers your previous comment regarding the DOT and possible widening of the road?
With the count, I guess it does.
Yeah.
Where are they based out of, David?
They're on Marion Adams.
Anybody else have any questions for David? Thank you, David. Sid, I entertain a motion for...
I move Resolution 716-2018B.
In second. Any comments? Tom, the roll call, please, Sue.
Weasley.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Rod Bush.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes. Christensen.
Yes.
Next item, Resolution 716-2018A, executing the final sale and transfer of funds for the real estate between the city of Mount Vernon and the Mount Vernon Community School District.
The school and city had agreed into a real estate option agreement back in January. It is now time, or we reached that point in the process where it's time for us to take ownership of the property. There still is a fallback if, for some reason, the product didn't move far or the property would revert back to the school, and we could get our money back, but given that the fundraising is almost seventy thousand dollars ahead of where we had even hoped it to be, so expecting that this project can move forward, and then we have engineers that need to keep moving on soil samples, so. Now is the time, we will basically issue a letter to the school districts telling them that we are exercising our option, and presenting them with a sixty thousand dollar check. They have seven days in which to accept.
I still have one.
Will we be responsible for the mowing and all that stuff until we break ground?
Correct.
Any funding source for this favor is the loss one?
We've actually now combined loss one, loss three into one pos, now we have a community wellness center fund, so all of the fundraising funds currently reside with the CCG, and we will ask them for those funds at a later date, but all of them will eventually make it into this one community wellness center.
Clarifying question, is the land we're buying, is it just for the footprint of the what we're plating, or is it we're buying all the land that was part of that donation back in 2006? I've got the plat, but I don't have the acres on it from the twelve fifteen.
It's one large rectangle that goes basically back to what would be the school's circle, the start of the school's parking lot in the front.
So it is rectangular?
Yes. Now, there is a joint ownership further to the west, kind of an odd shapes lot as well, that is jointly owned by the city and school, the school has got part of their headquarters on that, and we will have part of our geothermal wealth build on that as well, so.
Any mail, somebody have any questions? entertain a motion.
I would move approval of Resolution number 7-16-2018A.
A second.
Comments? Comments, roll call, please, Sue.
Wes.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Rod Bush.
Yes.
Weasley.
Yes.
All right, next item, Resolution 716-2018C, permitting installation of streetlights within the Spring Meadows Heights subdivision according to the terms set forth in the streetlight contract.
Correct. So each of the streetlights are what would, will be the intersections of the Spring Meadows Heights subdivision. Obviously, we expect more as the future phases go along, but these will be the initial three.
Is there a design standard that we use for locations and streetlights?
In this instance, we have streetlights at each intersection, and then there's a distance that we typically like to maintain. I'll let Dave kind of answer that. Yes, to answer your question, our design standards have a distance in between.
And that's kind of fine in subdivision order, is it?
The one that we just approved is the...
Sudas.
Sudas.
Sudas has a pretty complicated formula for combination and all that, you have to run through the model. Easy answer is about every 200 feet or a half block, usually works out pretty well, important standard poles that Alliance produces, so we usually look at it from that lens, that we want to try to be close to that, and then space and what is it, would be appropriate intersections to identify or eliminate crosswalks.
And do we have a design standard for the poles themselves? Because I know that we've used some historically appropriate ones in some places, and I seem to remember 10 years ago, the discussion about having a catalog of standard fixtures for pedestrian and potential streetlight, automobile streetlight.
Alliance offers certain options, there's somewhat decorative pole that they can do beyond what they provide with their agreement, and it would be additional cost, and if they were looking to standardize with some sort of decorative pole, that would probably have to be in developers' agreement to determine out the cost of share.
Do we have such a sort of catalog of design elements, Chris, that you're aware of?
No, under historic preservation guidelines, if we have something that it takes effect in those, then we do. In our design standards, we require whatever can be maintained by Alliance Energy, so that we don't get stuck with fixtures that may or may not be nearly archer.
Sure. Yeah, I just, I seem to remember us having such a thing, and I'm just as interested in the other things that it might specify, as I am. Streetlights are the thing I'm least interested in, in fact, but it just reminded me that we had this catalog of, you know, I can't go into Tampa, you know, we put up a park bench, these are what they look like, we put up pedestrian lighting, this is what they look like. Are you aware of such a thing?
I haven't seen anything, but I can look tomorrow for sure. Nobody's made me aware of it anyway, and I don't believe...
That's surprising.
Well, I don't believe I remember having that conversation with P&amp;Z, it was discussing the subdivision class, but that doesn't, that's not there.
Yeah, well, I'm not sure if it was referred to or defined within ordinance, but it might have just been sort of a policy loose kind of a thing, it may not have been adopted by a resolution.
My preference would be, because some of that stuff, the majority of that stuff will be discussed with the bypass plan, and in order to connect all of that together, that whatever we would want to adopt out there, we could utilize throughout the city as well.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
So we did have, yeah, so we had a standard, at least a visual for people to see what we're wanting.
Yeah, it just occurs to me that as we have all the expanded subdivisions and trails, there'll be a new park, you know, lots of, lots of things being built here, and it would be a great opportunity to see what, if we had anything like that before, and I have a strong memory of that.
I do remember the conversation.
Dan would certainly know whether or not we did, and might even know where it is.
I remember, right, the streetscape plan has some specifics in it, but obviously that was specific to that certain area.
For certain, we had wayfinding and signage, but I don't know what the vocabulary of fixtures might have been, it seems like...
Yeah, we have a lot of individual plans that have those specific elements within it.
Yes.
But nothing that I've seen, all I've seen, yet.
Yeah. Just a thought, I don't mean to take us devil into the hole.
No, that's, it's a good thought, rather talk about that now before they're actually putting the ball.
Yeah, we'll certainly have to start talking about redoing some of this, and all this one. One question I have, on the agenda that was emailed out, this resolution is 3-20-2017A, I'm pretty sure it's not March.
No, so, so as I was printing off and transferring, when I put them back, I grabbed those, so yeah, you have new resolutions.
Okay. Any other questions, anyone who can motion?
I move approval of Resolution 7-16-2018C.
A second. Any comments? Roll call, please, Sue.
Rose.
Yes.
Weasley.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Rod Bush.
Yes.
All right, next item, Resolution 716-2018B, approving the fiscal year 2019 transfers.
So if you look back kind of through our history, we tend to do one transfer at the beginning of the year, this covers all of budgeted funds that we have plans for either debt service payments, depreciation payments, or depreciation accounts, so this moves all of those budgeted numbers to the appropriate account. We will have at least one other transfer resolution throughout this fiscal year, for sure, but we tend to have one at the beginning and one at the end of the fiscal year.
Any questions? Chris? entertain a motion.
I move for the approval of Resolution 7-16-2018B, permitting transfers.
Any comments? No comments, roll call.
Christensen.
Yes.
Rod Bush.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Weasley.
Yes.
All right, next item, Resolution 716-2018B, establishing depositories of public funds with Mount Vernon Bank and Trust.
Actually, all three of the next resolutions are resolutions that we adopt yearly. The only thing that changes typically from year to year are the name and offices of individuals. The one that is missing, obviously, in light of another agenda item, is the fact that we typically have the mayor pro temp on here as well, but as Sue and I were talking, one year without a mayor pro temp won't be a struggle, so we'll add that back next year moving forward, so. You will need an individual motion on each of the resolutions, but there's...
There's no reason they don't all travel in the same one place.
No, they play nice at chamber meetings and stuff.
Questions, anyone who can?
I would move approval of Resolution 7-16-2018B.
Seven.
Any comments? Roll call, please, Sue.
Rod Bush.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Weasley.
Yes.
Okay, next quote, next item, Resolution 7-16-2018F, establishing depositories of public funds with Hill's Bank and Trust.
That's a move.
Second. Collins, no, roll call.
Wes.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Rod Bush.
Yes.
Weasley.
Probably two, not with two hundred.
Next one, Resolution 716-2018G, establishing depositories of public funds with Bridge Community Bank.
I move to approve Resolution 7-16-2018G.
A second. Roll call, please, Sue.
Rose.
Yes.
Weasley.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Rod Bush.
Yes.
All right, next items, motion for approval, consideration of claims list. Anybody have any questions, comments, or any questions? No, I don't entertain a motion for that as well.
You motion approved the most recent claims list as presented?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion of consideration of setting up public hearing date for an ordinance limiting chapter 92 water rates of the Mount Vernon Municipal Code. Chris?
This is the ordinance that was actually discussed at the last meeting, this is a reference to possible forgiveness for exorbitant amounts of water usage, so council is working on the two changes that we have discussed at the last meeting, and we just indicated that he is leaving that, Robert Graham, who's been working on this, so hopefully we'll have it ready to go for the next meeting.
Okay, I would move that we set the date for August 6, we give the need, 6:30 p.m.
In second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, I'll try not to cry upon reading, but brings great sadness, accept letter of resignation from Marty Christensen.
We talked about moving this to discussion in consideration, not that we were going to be able to twist Marty's arm to stay with work, just to give you some idea of what can be done. As you can read from the resignation letter, its effective date is August 8. At the August 20th meeting, and I'm going to verify, you might be able to have this discussion on the August 6 meeting as well, we just couldn't advertise prior to the resignation date. Yeah, a couple different options, the easiest of which is to appoint to fill this position until the November of 19, because this would be an appointment, whoever would run, and that election would take office immediately upon the canvassing of the votes, so they would wait till January 1 of '20.
So we would just, or Jamie would appoint somebody?
Counsel would appoint.
The council would appoint somebody, and then it would run through...
Marty's term.
Through the term, which would be that November election.
Basically, till the election in November of 19.
And then whatever the meeting is, immediately following the election, they would take seat, instead of like the normal January...
Yes, as long as they were canvassed between the term and the...
Sure, yes, okay, gotcha.
Now, you can go ahead and indicate that you would like to fill this position by appointment, citizens that have the opportunity to petition you to hold a vote.
Remind me on the number of signatures needed, doesn't it, like 25?
I have it emailed, it says it's not very big.
Yeah, 25 or a little 30.
Probably whatever we needed.
It's not very big, yeah.
And the cost, average cost?
The cost averages three to six thousand dollars for a special.
Is there a way to get out of the November ballot?
You could choose.
Because then your costs go way down.
Correct, you could choose, I believe. I have been in correspondence with Lynn County Auditor, and as long as you don't get within certain blackout dates, there is potential for it to be on the November ballot. So, my point being is if you did choose until September to decide what it is you were doing, that might be too late to get it on the official ballot, so there's no guarantee necessarily, but as long as things progress, yeah, there's potential to have it on the November ballot, you'd be...
So council's choices to appoint or hold an election, and if the election is held, well, either way you have to fill the seat within what, it's not 90 days?
Either 60 or 90 days.
I think it's 90. And so if the council chooses to hold an election, it could be combined with November.
Yeah, makes sense, as long as the discussion wasn't prolonged too far into September, I think she had indicated that that was a possibility.
Yeah, well, and I, so I just wanted to, yeah, to share, you know, I've seen this happen twice in my prime on council, and I think there was one other bill, and also retired in the last few years, and in that one, there was a decision to hold an election. So I've never seen an appointment. I think one of the proposals that I saw, because it was not long after the prior election within a year, was to just appoint the person that was the second or the next highest vote getter without getting a seat, that was one of the rationale.
I thought Dick Peters got appointed, the fellow...
Yeah.
Yeah, but it was the same kind of deal, right, I mean, it was until the next election, so.
It was a really short...
Yeah, it was, you know, probably less than six months.
Paul was, too.
Was he really?
Yeah.
Oh, I apologize.
And I don't know what you're talking about, in terms of the next vote getter, this case, Eric and I ran on a vote.
Well, there'd be some...
Yeah.
It's as likely to be Mickey Mouse.
Mickey Mouse or Donald Duck.
I stand corrected.
But if we, so if we acted to let it go to the election this year, that would be a one-year term, to fulfill that role, and then that would...
Then they would stay working.
And not even, I don't, like I said, it wouldn't even be a, no, it would be almost a full year for that.
Yeah.
It would be a four-years term per se.
Right, okay.
And I don't want to speak out loud by any means, but I've had conversations with Neil Rude, I'm sure everybody probably knows that he's been on council for, I think he was almost three full terms, and he expressed interest and willing to fill, fill the void if there was no desire to do a special election or anything like that, so.
We will have to put notice in the paper regardless, you know, depending on how it works out, like I said, it could be, I received verification from Lynn County, we could have the discussion on August 6, and still have it in the paper four days prior to the August 20th city council meeting, still need to get it reworked, so it's no less than four or more than 20 days.
And do we, I should probably know this, but do we have an election happening in November regardless of what we do?
We don't. We do not from the city's...
We're not.
But is there some, is there county, is there federal, is there states, or anything happening in November?
Supervisors, supervisors, county supervisors, I don't have gone from five to three.
So if we went that route, I'm just trying to think of, is it justified in spending three to six thousand dollars in having a whole election in September or October when just in November, can we piggyback? I guess what I'm asking, can we piggyback on another election year?
I think if it were your desire to go to the election, I guess I would look at it this way, if there's one individual that's willing to serve for the remainder of the year and we don't get a petition, then my suggestion as a staff person would be, that's the easiest route to go.
I would be real concerned about voter turnout.
Well, that would be my other thought, is if you get, you know, somebody gets eight votes and they're the winner, but...
If we do show up and there are, you know, half a dozen individuals that are willing to fill that, that role, then it would probably be easier to let them go off and get signatures and be on a ballot, you know, to fill that...
But in that scenario, we could hold it in November, would we...
Yeah, as a matter of fact, they wouldn't hold a special election, my understanding, in September, October, because that's a blackout period for them, for the county.
You'd be forced to hold it.
So you'd be forced to wait. So that was the biggest question mark, is if the resignation occurred in such a manner that you could still fulfill the 90-day window, and I believe it does by two days.
It was kind of close with like Paul, obviously, he had a lot of experience, so, you know, he was able to just kind of not really lose anything, skip a beat, and basically kind of the same thing with Neil, with all his years of being on the council as well, but obviously, this is your guys' choice, not mine as well.
The nice part about having the discussion tonight, too, is if anybody else is wanting to, they can indicate between now and obviously August 6 to you, and again, if there are multiple individuals, I have seen the council actually do interviews at a meeting.
And I've talked to other people with Neil, someone that was willing to serve, I don't know if anybody else had...
Well, even before I heard about this, I had people express interest in running for council. So this is definitely one, I know they're out there, so.
Yeah.
Could you find out come, if it is in November, if it is anything different, if it was three, five, or whatever it was, or special, what more would it cost us to get on the November?
I don't believe, no. So we bear the full brunt of the cost of the election, that three to six thousand dollar, much less if we can go on the November ballot.
I'd really like to see our elections being in these years anyway. You'd get more people to the, to vote. Instead of our measly fifteen to twenty percent, we'd get more into the polls and more to vote for the council members. So it would really be nice if we could shift them a year.
How would you fight that back?
It would, it would be very nice. I still don't know why it's not done that way, unless people want level turnouts. That's the only thing I can understand.
Yeah, that's my largest concern, is just not the turnout.
This is different government-wide, but the school board had a five-month opening, they appointed someone, but the premise of that, the point, it was a total board member, was that they were not going to run in the next election. And I don't know if that's supported or not, but no.
It's consideration.
It's out.
Well, as we found at the last election, we had, we had two open seats and only two people ran. So it's hard to return anybody, quite honestly. We see it all the time with other towns, they have open seats and nobody's running.
But as much fun as we're having these days, I think it's.
Yeah. I would encourage through the paper load or by watching this, if you do have any interest and want to indicate either to any of you or at City Hall, just so we would have kind of a collective idea if there's more than one individual that would be interested in filling this position for a little over a year. That might be beneficial for you making your decision.
Yeah, just for the record, I'm a big fan of elections and voter appointments. Especially when they won't cost us anything more.
So what do you need tonight, Chris?
Nothing. I think originally, we were just going to have a resignation letter on there. But in light of me getting some of that information from Lynn County, I just kind of wanted to give you some options and give it a couple of weeks to be out in the public, through the press, and then let people kind of indicate to you what they think is best.
So what would be on the agenda from four to six? Are you going to expect people that are interested to come forward?
Now, I think on the sixth discussion, it would be an indication from this council as to which route you would like me to go. So I would say indicate before the sixth if you have some intention of wanting to fill that seat, if you can. You can still show up on the, the meeting on the sixth and be part of that discussion as well. The sixth would be for you to determine what route you want to go, because like I said, we have to publish notice regardless of what route you go. And we have to indicate publicly to the council, or to the citizens what, what your plan is. We would also have to indicate to Lynn County, should they, we want to be on that ballot, as soon as possible is kind of a key indicator as well.
Okay. Excellent. Anybody else have any other questions? Next item, reports to be received, filed, Mount Vernon Police Report. Chief, anything you want to highlight to the council?
Nothing additional, unless you have questions.
How did Heritage Days go?
Very good. Nice to watch.
Thank you to you and your team.
I got a question.
Yeah.
These Virgil eastbound accidents, there's two of them. When we, when we were doing the reporting on the roundabouts, were these part of those? Or was it just out of the realm of being called drummed about accidents?
I'm going to, when I sent them the original numbers, I went from west of Tenth Avenue to Hillview Drive. So I incorporated anything in that corridor along with the original numbers that I sent. What they took out and interpreted in their data was mostly based on that intersection. I'd lay right inside the intersection for the report that you guys received from them.
All right. Because I, to be honest with you, I, before the roundabouts, I don't remember this many accidents in Virgil and eastbound. And I think it has something to do with the roundabout.
We've always had a few there. I have to pull the numbers specifically to that intersection. If I can analyze that, too, shoot that, shoot that to you.
Well, I, I've gone up to that, and it's, it's a, quite an obstacle sometimes to see them guys coming around here and trying to get out, so.
And busy.
If they didn't include that, that makes it even worse than I thought it was, so. Any other questions for Chief?
Thank you.
Chief.
Thanks.
Next item is Mount Vernon Public Works Report. Nick, anything to highlight for the council?
Meeting on May or council, Public Works just wants to thank Bonnie Arons for lining up two painters from the high school painter of Snowblades. It was pretty awesome for the parade.
They were ahead.
Yep, a lot of positive comments. Which is wrong with them.
I was going to say, are there pictures?
Connor Meyer.
And Shu Revert, yeah.
So those are the two artists. There's some pictures, yes, so, but they're still painted. They'll be painted until maybe the second snowfall.
What was a good addition to that was also there was information about, like, how many inches of snowfall in the winter? How many miles that you treat? How much salt, how much salt you put down? I mean, it's probably all that that you presented to us and stuff one time or another. But you had that information to complement the painting, so that was pretty cool.
Yeah, if anyone wants that information, it's out there, so.
I have a question. Can we use those miniature traffic cones to keep people from parking in front of our garbage cans?
You might need some a little little bit.
I thought maybe that's what they do.
Those, those were a hit, weren't they?
They were. Thank you, Mayor.
Chris was rolling. Do you want to remind everybody of that?
I admit, I was skeptical about getting the cones.
And Mayor, that?
How about you, Warren?
Just staying out of it.
Soon as it's high for it.
It's a rangy city logo on there, it's just, I think that's what it was, it's supposed to be.
Yeah.
It's our city logo.
For the record, I did.
People were screaming that one.
Thanks to you and your team for. One more, yeah. When they do the chip and seal on those two streets, for them, areas that are washed out, you know, the big gibbets and everything, what will they put in there?
They put cold patches.
Cold patches, then they'll.
Then they'll seal code.
Seal code.
That way it keeps them from continuing to do that.
Right, okay.
Probably what, three, four years there, it'll.
Yeah.
Low, low traffic count, so. And currently, we have Kluusner Construction in town this week, practice. So I had a roll call today. I did not put that in the paper, because it usually doesn't interfere with traffic or anything. So they'll just come in, seal the practice, and then they'll be on their way. So, great. Thank you.
Everybody?
Thanks, Nick.
Next item is Mount Vernon Parks and Recreation Report. Matt is not here tonight, but he did email out this report a few days ago, so nobody has any questions. Chairman with Chris and otherwise?
I do have one comment. At one point when Matt was talking, we talked about having some more updates on the center, on the wellness center, in his report. I think I'd like to see that.
As far as?
Just to make, just, this is just a reminder really going forward, that that's, it seems like a good place to have those things in terms of conversation.
With regards to the operational preparation.
Yeah, yeah, when they get going on that, so.
Sure.
Anybody else, anything else? Reports, as I mentioned, with Heritage Days, I think that went off extremely well this past weekend, other than Friday. And Mother Nature decided to get involved for a while. Friday night was a little, little slim in terms of numbers, but I think Saturday went off about as well as it could. So thanks to everybody involved with that. I know it's a lot of work, takes a lot of hands on deck for sure. Same with the groundbreaking ceremony Saturday morning. Thanks to everyone from the council that showed up and showed, and did show their support for that as well. Obviously, the school district and the Burris family, and Tom did a wonderful job as well. So again, thanks to everybody involved with that. And of course, you may get this in your report, but Highway one closing is obviously all on right, and that's. So everybody, just reminder on that, I think that's supposed to last a few days. Other than that, that's it. Anything from council, committee reports, anybody have anything to share? I would just recommend anybody that had, had that hail damage, definitely have their insurance people look at it, because you wouldn't think that you had the damage, but when, when they come out and look at an exagerated damage, you better get it fixed, because, well, you got two years, I guess, most, but still, it's good to, good to have it looked at at least. Yeah. Anything else? Chris, did you manage shares report?
Just the biggest thing is the, the new water service excise tax is replacing sales tax. This is the state drawing money specific to the water quality infrastructure fund and the water quality assistance fund, neither of which we know exactly what they're going to be used for, but they're kind of coming out of the water quality issues in the entire state of Iowa. So this is part of their answer is to move sales tax. It's just a replacement. You're not going to see any difference on your bill, it's just going to be worded differently. The other big thing is my vacation starts on July twenty-seventh. It will be in the middle of nowhere, so limited, so I'm going to do as much of the packet as I can before I leave, but there's still an entire week prior to the council meeting, I won't be gone, so. I'm sure that there is Wi-Fi connection at the lodge, so crossing my fingers that I can at least spend one night just going back and forth with staff, so. As Jamie mentioned, it's supposed to be done tomorrow, five o'clock tomorrow, I was wondering if it should be done with that intersection, so. Cross my fingers and hope that is in case. Auditors have been here, they do a preliminary assessment, come in and collect a bunch of information and data, and then they'll be back by the week of August twelfth, and they'll typically be here for at least four to five days that week. And of course, the one last reminder, the bypass steering committee is set for Wednesday.
Who does that mean?
Here. Definitely.
Anything else, Chris?
No. One other item I failed to mention, and this reminded me when I saw my email, obviously, we've already had July fourth, and I didn't hear a whole lot of fireworks going on around that time, so.
A few.
Yeah.
Much better than last year.
Much better.
But I did receive an email in regards to fireworks, and the individual that sent the email sounded like she kind of handled it on her own. So I responded to her email like, please, pleaded with her to make sure that they do call Chief and his team in terms of, so it can be addressed. So obviously, if there is fireworks being shot off, that, you know, they can be handled in the correct manner as opposed to one neighbor going in and yelling at another neighbor type of thing. But, but for the most part, I thought it was a hundred times better than it was previous year, so, that's fantastic.
Anybody else have anything? No further business, this meeting stands adjourned.